Yeah, I know. Okay, sorry. Good evening, everyone. Pursuant to New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Verizon Files Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, June 27, 2017. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and agenda items. Mr. Mara?
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that active recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Roll call, please.
Andriani?
Present.
Callie?
Present.
Dunn?
Present.
Dineff?
Present.
Ellis Foster?
Here.
Reed?
Present.
Singh?
Weber?
Here.
DePrima?
Here.
Quorum exist?
Thank you. Can we all rise for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody would remain standing, please, for a moment of silence. Move the Board acknowledge the passing of Michelle Lepore, retired Olbridge High School mathematics teacher, and Louise Lilly Lang, retired middle school teacher. We express our deepest sympathy to their family and friends. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated.
Oh, Mrs. DePrima, I'm sorry. I had sent one today, but it may not reach your desk, and I don't want to wait till August. Long-term secretary in the district, Mary Greco, also passed away these past few days, and we are sad to have her passing. She worked in the district for many years as a building secretary.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mrs. Sedino. As usual, we have a code of ethics, which is narrated by one of our Board members each month. Mr. Dineff volunteered, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is the Code of Ethics Corner. Highlight of the month: Support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dineff. Again, welcome, everyone. I apologize for the late start. Move the Board—oh, Mr. Mara, some—
Yeah, there's just a slight change in procedure tonight. In terms of administrative changes, when we reach each section, I will announce the administrative changes, the resolution, and the section number when we get to that section. Thank you, Mr. DePrima.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Move the Board approve the following minutes. We don't have to vote on that. Our student—oh, we do. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes. I apologize.
Andriani will move.
Mrs. Andriani, second.
Callie, second.
Mrs. Callie, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mara.
Andriani?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Dineff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Abstain.
DePrima?
Yes.
The minutes are approved.
I just want to make a correction. I am sorry. The information has just come in today, and I deeply apologize to the Greco family. It was Mary Greco's husband that had passed. I own that mistake, and I am deeply sorry for that misinformation. It was Mary Greco's husband. The information was sent to me this afternoon, and I thought it was put on the agenda as such, but I'm sorry. And obviously, send our deepest sympathy to the Greco family.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our student representative will not be here tonight as the school year is ended, so we move on to recognition. We have a lot of recognition tonight. This is the best part of the meeting. Mrs. Sedino.
First, I'd like to have Mr. Richard Rubenstein, from the owner of Card Smart in Olbridge, please come to deas. And I think Ms. Callie was going to join him at deas. Move the Board to condemn Mr. Richard Rubenstein, owner of Card Smart in Olbridge, for his donation of fidgets on behalf of the children of special needs in Olbridge Township Public Schools.
For those of you that don't know, Mr. Rubenstein owns Card Smart across the street by Olbridge Pizza and the Farmer's Market, and he's been very generous to the community and the school district. Thank you, Mr. Rubenstein.
On our second, I see we have a large contingency here from our Olbridge Special Olympics Winter Games participants. So please move the Board to commend the following Olbridge students for their achievements in the New Jersey Special Olympics Winter Games speed skating competition. I see Mr. Dr. Tuwi and Ms. Callie are there, so can we have all those participants please come to deas? We have Yemaj, Objusan, Louis Cavanna, Robert Liu, Salvatore Lapino, Dylan Madrid, Paul We also have some participants from the New Jersey Special Olympics basketball program. So will the following participants from our basketball program please come to the deas when your name is called Louis Cavanna. Robert Liu. Dylan Madrid. Paul Pantano. Thank you.
Can I interrupt for one second? When we do recognition, there's usually a group picture. Our official photographer isn't here, but if any of the parents, maybe the student athletes, would like to come back up for a group picture? Guys, come on up on stage. Line up on stage, Mrs. Callie and Dr. Tuwi. Gentlemen, come on up for a picture.
Move the Board of Education to commend the Jonas Salk Middle School Girls Track and Field Team for winning the 2017 GMC Championships out South Brunswick on March 23, 2017. Are there any representatives from the Jonas Salk School Girls and Track and Field Team? Your name is?
Olivia Diorio.
Olivia Diorio. Oh, yes, we had breakfast together, didn't we? Okay. Well, your information was submitted to us from your school. We'll make sure they send you out a nice certificate. So thank you for joining us today, and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. While I'm here, as is Promise Fitzpatrick here. Okay. So we move the Board to have Education to commend Promise Fitzpatrick, 7th grader at Jonas Salk School, for the Girls Track and Field Team for winning the 102-meter races of the GMCs on May 26, 2017. Okay. Move the Board of Education to commend the following Olbridge High School students for their placements at the FBLA 2017 New Jersey State Competitions in March 2017. And I know their director or assistant director is here. Do you want to come up to the podium for us, please?
Future Business Leaders of America is the largest career student organization in the world. Its mission is to bring business and education together through the leadership and career development programs. Each year, FBLA members compete in various business and leadership events on the regional, state, and national level. The students that we are honoring tonight were all top-five finalists at the New Jersey State Leadership Conference, which was held in Atlantic City. As a top-five finalist, each student is entitled to progress and compete at the national level. There are over 2,000 competitors competing for the state of New Jersey, so it's quite an accomplishment. We're very proud. Olbridge, our chapter of over 150 members, is very proud of the finalists that we have, and I know we have two here tonight, and three others could not make it. So I'll announce the two that are here. First, we have Salvatore Giordano, an 11th grader. He placed fifth in Accounting I. So we'll get your certificates. And we also have Frank Serp. He was a 12th grader. He's now graduated. He earned first place in journalism, business journalism, and he's also a Gold Member Award winner. You can come up, please. Thank you. We also have a few others I'd just like to mention. Robin McManus, a 12th grader, placed first in word processing. Caitlin Iyer, an 11th grader. She was also the FBLA president this year, placed first place in Accounting I and fourth place in Partnership with Business. And Gabrielle Tanson, 12th grader, placed fourth in Partnership with Business. And last, we had a 9th grader, very impressive, Demaby N'Kwondo. She placed fifth in Introduction to Business. So we're very proud of all of our competitors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Simone.
Mr. DePrima, one second. Mrs. Simone, I just wanted to say that we've become a very informal society, but to see two young men here in professional business attire is a joy.
Dr. Hoka, can you join Mr. Uptograph at the podium for the next presentation, since I don't see anybody from the high school here administration? Move the Board of Education to recognize Stephen Uptograph and the Choral Students for their accomplishments on May 12, 2017, of the Choral Competition at Bethlehem, Pennsylvania.
Are we calling?
The concert, chorus concert, they won first place for women's recital for the superior rating, women's choir category, and Emily Chow, a senior, for Outstanding Accompanist Award, and Kiri Skibieski was outstanding soloist. Are any of those representatives here with you today?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay. So is there a hard part of having—
We can virtually—
Yes.
I'm sorry. We can virtually congratulate them. Hopefully, someone is home watching them.
Hope so, too.
And congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I can't imagine what a senior and a junior have better to do on a 27th of June than to be here. Move the Board of Education to recognize Lisa Helios and Yuri Shikanovich for the Girls Who Code moderators for dedicating countless hours to help establish and facilitate a Girls Who Code chapter at Olbridge High School. Dr. Kuskun, we'll take it from there.
Good evening, everyone. The statistics concerning females in the professions of math, science, technology, and engineering have been often spoken about of late. In particular, is really the underrepresentation of females in those courses of study relative to the percentage of females pursuing higher education degrees. Of course, this isn't the only disproportionality that exists, but it is one of them. In Olbridge, under the leadership of Mrs. Hicks, who's our Career and Technical Education supervisor, we have for the last couple of years been making it a concerted focus of our Career and Technical Education programs to bridge those gaps and introduce those types of courses to groups of folks who might not necessarily have had them. One of those focuses this year was in the area of computer science and coding. And the two individuals who we recognize here tonight, Lisa Helios and Yuri Shikanovich, were instrumental in this, really crucial in this. Lisa, I became acquainted with Lisa last year, and I was immediately impressed, struck by her tenacity, her resourcefulness, and most importantly, her sincere interest in wanting to contribute and establish a partnership with the Olbridge School District. Her connections at Rutgers have enabled us to build a number of partnerships, and she was really instrumental in getting the charter for the Girls Who Code Club here, in which approximately 25 female high school students participated. And also, you know, all that paperwork, and she did also attend on a weekly basis, assisting Yuri with managing a class of 25 high school students after school. She also applied for a Girls Who Code grant. We worked with her on that, which enabled her and the club to purchase new hardware for next year and also to host a celebratory party at the end of the year. So with great gratitude to Lisa, all the work that she did. Thank you, Lisa. And Yuri is a volunteer. He's our industry partner. Yuri is a professional computer coder, writes code for human resources firm. And Yuri was simply here out of really the goodness of his heart. He's a—has young children, right? Is it two? Two young children, wife, busy career, and yet he found time to come to Olbridge. He's not a resident of Olbridge, right?
He's Brunswick.
He's Brunswick. He's Brunswick even, right? So, you know, he really just out of the goodness of his heart spent two hours a week with our high school students, teaching them how to code. And it wasn't as if he just walked through the door and was like, okay, start. I mean, he had to get a background check, criminal check, we made him get a TV test, and all sorts of other things that we do with our volunteers. So he had to jump through some hoops to give his time, and it was a great experience. Both of them, glad to say, are on board next year and continue to work with us and build on the club. And I'm really just been inspired and on some level overwhelmed with just the selfless dedication of time that both of these individuals have given for the good of the district. So on behalf of the Board of Education, Senior Administration, and myself, and the girls, and Mrs. Hicks, we thank you.
Thank you. Move the Board of Education to recognize Carlos Castrenovo and Emily Aristicato of Giuseppe's Pizza in Olbridge for the generosity for the pizza donation for the mentoring program at the YMCA. They continue to support the school year to benefit our students, their peer leaders, and mentors. I don't see either of those two very valuable community business leaders here, are they? They're probably busy tonight. It's a busy night. So we will definitely stop by and recognize them as well. And also, we'd like to have the Board of Education to recognize the efforts of Denise Baccero. She's the branch director with Ken Cardulo of the Olbridge YMCA for the support of the Carl Sandburg Mentoring Program that YMCA has graciously provided their facility and staff to our students to engage in the positive construction of after-school activities throughout the year. Any representatives from YMCA here today? So that concludes recognition. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mrs. Sedino, and thank you for all the recipients. Okay. I need a motion to recognize—motion to move recognition, items 1 through 11, please. Mr. Weber, second.
Reed.
Mr. Reed. Discussion, anybody? Mr. Mara.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Dineff?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 11 pass.
Congratulations, everybody. Okay, moving on. Mr. Sedino, your turn again.
Thank you. There's a few items on our superintendent's report, and I'll stick with the first part with our businesses and their support. I asked all of the schools to submit to me the businesses that have supported them within our community, whether that be financial support, whether that be merchandise support, whether something like Giuseppe's with the pizza, or materials for programs and activities, or support of having—sending staff down to assist. And of course, as you'd imagine, the list was very vast. And this way, instead of doing a recognition for every company that's doing this, I'm going to—every year, going to go through that list and just to recognize those companies that help us to make the school district a better place to work and learn. This year's represented companies that we'd like to represent are Anthony's Cold-Fired Pizza of Marlboro, Bright and Beautiful, Buffalo Wild Wings, the Dunkin' Donuts right here on 516, Essinger's Landscaping, Friendly's under the leadership of Mr. John Crackey, Giuseppe's Pizzeria, Hauser Hill Farms, the IEP Planters of New Jersey, Jaclyn's Florists, Jersey Mike Subs, The Lakewood Blue Claws, Monmouth County SPCA, Nicola's Pizza, New Jersey Spine and Wellness, Olbridge Elks, and under the leadership of Mr. Mike DeSimone, the Olbridge Police Department, the Olbridge Town Senior Center, the Olbridge YMCA, Palooza Chiropractic, Philip 66, Rutgers Football, The Max of Olbridge, The Memory Book, Texas Roadhouse, Verizon, and Wonder Bagels. So in some way, all of those businesses have reached out to our schools to offer them support, so we thank them. After the high school graduation recently, the centerpiece flowers came back to us, and just talking to the staff, and we thought, how could we pass this on and, you know, pass this along and support our community that's given so much to us? So unfortunately, one of the centerpieces had a tragedy on the way to the car. So out of the three, we had two viable centerpieces, and they went to senior centers within the—our community, senior care centers. And I received this one—this letter from Roosevelt Care Center. And prior to sending it there, I did speak to former Board member, Ms. Annette Hotman, and she pointed me in the right direction and said they'd love to have the flowers there. So, "Dear Mr. Sedino, on behalf of the residents and staff, we would like to thank you for the donation of flowers to Roosevelt Care Center Recreation Department. The beautiful arrangement really helped brighten the day of residents. The flowers are a welcome addition to our activities. We use donated arrangements in varieties of ways. Flowers are placed in bud vases and decorate the tables of the residents' dining halls, the banquets for residents to enjoy in their bedrooms. They also are used as sensory stimulation in our programs, and residents often reminisce over the flowers that they carry at their weddings or receiving—giving flowers as a gift and planting their flavored flowers in the garden. We thank you for your support of our program and for thinking of us, and congratulations to the graduates of the Class of 2017, Joanne Franklin, Chief Recreation Therapist at Roosevelt Care Center." So thank you to Olbridge High School for passing it along and supporting that. Second, or third, is that twice a year is my responsibility under New Jersey Public Law 2010, that I have to report out to the public at a board meeting, the violence vandalism or EVRS reporting and HIB reporting that happens within the school district. Everyone from the Board and the administrative staff, you should have a printout of this in front of you. And I think at this time, while I'm getting to the meats and potatoes of it, Ms. Walsh will be putting it on the TV, so the public at home could see it as well. The first few slides don't have much data, so I'll just progress through them as you're getting ready. Every year, superintendents are required to report to the Board of Education on the incidents of violence and vandalism that occurred within the district in the previous school year. With the passage of Public Law 2010 and the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, incidents of HIB as well as violence and vandalism must be reported to the public twice a year. Period 1 consists of the data from September 1st through December 31st of a school year, and period 2 consists of January 1st through June 30th of that same year. Both reports require a monthly collection of input into this data into the state's reporting system. The Electronic Violence and Vandalism Reporting System requires the collection of input of the following data. The count of incidents by reporting category of violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse. Results of vandalism for whether the police were notified with no complaint, the police were notified but with a complaint, whether in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension resulted, or there was an expulsion, unilateral removal, or removal by an administrative law judge. We also must report on the offenders and the victims, whether they be student offenders, student victims, school personnel victims, student victims of violent and criminal offenses. And we must report on the programs provided for the discipline in action, whether that's assignments of instruction or support services in district programs, home assignment, home instruction, or out-of-district programming. In Section A of the report for period 1, and remember, this is from July to December of 2016, we saw in violence 12 incidents of violence, one instance of vandalism, zero weapons offenses, 10 substance abuse offenses, totaling 34 unduplicated offenses. There were zero costs for vandalism to the district, and in Section C, the actions taken, there were four police notifications without complaint, two notifications— two notifications to the police, I'm sorry, three notifications to the police with a complaint filed, two in-school suspensions, 30 out-of-school suspensions, and zero expulsions or removals by an ALJ. In Section D, we see that we had 41 student offenders, 15 student victims, and school personnel victims were four. Student victims of violent crimes, zero. Section E, we see that there were 21 incidences of educational program or instruction for support, zero in-district programs, 19 home instructions, and zero out-of-district programs. The next data we look at is our HIB or anti-bullying information. We had 11 confirmed incidences of bullying. All of them were completed within the 10-day investigation constraints, and the Board of Education rendered their decision, and all of those, 11. The nature of those incidents were two of race, zero of color, one of religion, zero of ancestry, two of gender, zero of sexual orientation, one of gender identity and expression, one of mental, physical, and sensory disability, and six of other distinguishing characteristics. The mode of HIB, one was a gesture, zero were written, eight were verbal, one was physical, and two were electronic communications. The discipline in the action that was taken, seven were other or none, zero expulsions, one, zero in-school suspensions, two out-of-school suspensions, zero unilateral removal by an ALJ, seven detentions, and one suspension of privileges. Now, I know that information is dry, and it has to be reported twice a year, but I think here's where the trends show in the district and what we're doing and what our programs are doing to bring down those numbers. As you can see, during the periods of 2009 through 2013, we had some rather high numbers, the highest being 180 incidences total. And since that time, this administration has worked to lower that with our programs and working with our staff and our counselors and the schools and our teachers. And we see that just for reporting period one, and that's all I have to report on by law for this section is, it was, that section only was 23, but I continue with that information further down to give you a total. And also, for reporting period one, the period I'm reporting on today, and under HIB, there were 11 incidences, as we discussed. Now, we go to the next slide. One more, Sue. This is the total for the 2016-17 school year. We have this information early because we applied the data to a program that we're working with the Department of Education on, so we had it earlier than we need to. And I'd like to thank our HIB Coordinator, Dr. Cascone, for that, and his Administrative Assistant, Diane Duffy, who does, who do great work in getting this information and data to me. So, we can see the total for the 2016-17 school year is 85 total incidences of violence and vandalism, and 23 incidences of bullying, HIB, in which items were confirmed. So, we've really dropped our numbers down since they've been tracking this data. And it really is a, again, speaks to the work that's being done in our schools with our classroom teachers, with our administration, with our counselors, and everyone involved in our programs for character education. That kind of drop doesn't happen by accident, and the state really goes through this data with a fine-tooth comb. So, I thank everyone involved for making that happen. Of course, Dr. Hoker's work with character education makes it possible as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sidedino.
And I'm still not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Done. Okay. So, at this time, are you gonna, I would like you to get the link ready for me. Okay. I'm gonna introduce Justine Jacobs as you do that. So, Justine Jacobs is a student at the University of Arizona? Arizona State, I'm sorry. Why don't you come up to the podium, so everybody gets to see you and say hello to you? And she was my student at Sauk School, she was a student at the high school when I was there. And she reached out to me about, two months ago, saying she needed to do some work, to get some hours, in an educational program of some setting. And we got together, we brainstormed, and there was, on social media, a video that was out there. A few districts did, and high school did something very similar, but just at the high school level, where we really wanted to get the opportunity for our students to be recognized by their teachers and those educators and principals out there who work hard to come to work every day, but that work is easy because they're inspired by their students. And this was a great way for the students to show them that their, those educators are inspired by them. And Justine did an amazing job of putting this video together. I think she wrapped it up rather nicely, it's kind of a tissue moment at the end. So, Justine, would you like to say a few words about the program and what year you're in at Arizona State? Press the button here, there you go.
I press it and I have to hold it?
You're good.
So, hi, I'm Justine Jacobs. I go to school at Arizona State University, so I'm about to be a junior in August. So, basically, the class that I'm in, it's all about service learning. You have to take 70 hours of like any internship of your choice, of course. I reached out to Mr. Sidedino. And we basically, I mean, like, he basically said it all. We decided that this would be a really great, I'm gonna be a teacher in the future, so I thought that like, this would be cool to like, see how teachers and students interact with each other. And in the video, you can really tell, like, I don't know, you could just see it. I didn't prepare a speech, I'm sorry, guys.
You're doing great, you're doing great.
But, yeah, you could just see that in the video, and it's a, it is a tearjerker.
As I can attest, we all have tough nights in front of the microphone sometimes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did not prepare anything.
All right, just keep your microphone, and we'll see the work that you did. And after tonight, nobody's seen this except for Dr. Hoker, myself, and Justine. A little special treat for the board, as I promised. And we'll make this available to the public through links on our district website, starting tomorrow.
Inspiring, I love inspiring, I love coming to the world every day, knowing that you'll be here.
You're amazing, and every day, I can't see not seeing you, and having you there, it's just one of those wonderful things.
I think you will do very well, whatever you choose to do. Thank you for inspiring us every single day.
Do we have a good time at school every day?
Yeah!
Yeah! And you guys are why I come to school, so I come to teach you guys things. But every day, you guys teach me things, you teach me how to be a better teacher. And I really love you guys, okay?
When we started to work together, you were learning to read, and now, you're reading to learn. You inspire me, and I wanted you to know that. Thank you, Carson, for being here.
You do everything that you should do, you always follow the Six Pillars. You're a great role model for your classmates, and I can't wait to see all the wonderful things you do.
I admire your work ethic, your stick-tootiness, and your positive attitude. I really love having you as a student, and thank you for making my job so special.
I've seen so much progress with you this year, and I just want to let you know how impressed with you I am, and how happy I am, and I hope going into middle school, you continue to put your best foot forward.
No, thank you for coming to work, enjoying everything.
Every single year, since you've been kindergarten, I've watched you grow. You're such a responsible young man, you're a person of good character. I know that you have a very strong work ethic.
You are truly an amazing and inspiring young lady with a vivacious spirit that filled our classroom with joy and laughter each and every day. Remember that greatness is defined as the ability to believe in yourself and ignoring everyone who says you can't do it.
You're creative and you're curious, you're funny and you're passionate for reading. I was so glad to have had you in my classes, you're a honor.
I mean, now, the past five years, I am so proud of you. Everything that you've accomplished, you have outstanding character, you're an amazing student, and most importantly, every day, no matter what happens, you always come to school with a smile on your face. And I'm honored to know you, and we're honored to have you at Southland School. I'll miss you terribly. I'm gonna, like, look up, I'm gonna miss you a lot, Paul, and you may not realize how much I care about you, but I'm so happy because you do so many great things at school.
I just wanted to say that I'm so proud of you, and you've grown into such a mature young man. You've progressed so much this year, and you have inspired me because of just the progress you've made from last year to this year.
You're a good choice, and you're experienced, and you're a great man.
That's what you put into your classwork. You try so hard, you ask questions, tell me what you understand, and it really makes me want to become a better teacher and find every way to teach you, so you can reach all the kids.
You try so hard, and it makes me want to work to figure out how I can teach you better because when I see a student that really wants to learn and really wants to get it, I try ten times harder to figure out how I can make you get it.
You're such a kind and caring person, and you truly are a positive role model for the class, and it makes me so happy to come to school every day and see your smile on your face.
But you love learning, and your passion for science really motivates me to create more interesting lessons. And you're my future meteorologist, right? And thank you for always being here.
I love coming to work every day because of you. You inspire me every day to be a better teacher, because not only am I teaching you, but you're teaching me. All the things that you know about Apple and the smartphone, you're enabling me to be a better teacher every day.
We don't let anything discourage you. When you're having a hard time, you always have a beautiful smile on your face.
Do you know why I love you?
Yes.
Because you're always trying your, because you're always trying your best. And that's why I love you, right? And that's what teaching means to me, for special boys just like you.
No matter what type of day I'm having, if I am so sad, who's the first person to run up and give me a hug? You are, who always has a smile on his face. Even if we're having such a bad day, he can turn around so quick and put a smile on my face. You know why? Because you are so special.
Your mom told me because you're so nervous about second grade because you're not gonna be with me, so I brought you a little something to show you how much I care for you, right? It's something I know that you really like. Who is it? Who is it? Pavington? Didn't you really want Pavington? So, you can hold him anytime you need.
I'm so proud and curious and curiousy why, to stand up and suck. I'm doing things that recently never thought you would do, and giving it a shot, and it doesn't matter how you turn out. And I'm so happy to be a part of your life.
And you make the world of fun every day, the way you interact in class. One of the many reasons that I'm working at Ice Mountain, that I'm working at Ice Mountain, and your hard work this year has really shown a tremendous amount of growth, and I'm really proud of you. You're one of those students that I enjoy having because I have you in the room, as well as in the classroom. The conversations we have, one of the reasons why I'm a teacher, as soon as I can.
So, you inspire me to do my job, and you inspire me to do the best I can do because you care for me, and I love you.
Every day, you sing to me, so what Dr. Tinkio did was, I took one of our songs, It's a Small World, and I kind of rewrote the words a little bit, and I'm gonna sing a song just for you. So, everybody, sit back, put your hands in your lap, and let's just listen.
So, thank you, Justine, for your work, and on behalf of the board, and any of the board members want to say anything, they're more than welcome to. I know it's hard for them with their schedules to be in the schools and see the product of their work and their decisions, and supporting the school district. So, every year, I like to put together something at the end, or the yearbook, digital yearbook that we've done in the past, to thank them, and this is a nice twist on it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sidedino, and thank you, Ms. Jacobs, that was a very pleasant surprise. I think it encompasses, the video encompasses what we're all about. Thank you all. Anybody want to say anything? Okay. Mr. Sidedino, I believe you took care of progress towards goals also?
Yes, it's all included.
Mr. Mauer, any correspondence? Okay, special committee reports. If everybody remembers last month, we kind of had abbreviated reports because of the length of the meeting with Teacher of the Year. So, we're gonna continue on this month, I'll start on my left. I think, Mr. Dineoff, first?
Thank you, Mr. DePrima. We held a District Technology Committee meeting on May 18th, and I'm going to read a brief update from the meeting. The committee discussed many district updates, including AppleTrack HR. AppleTrack HR is the district's new human resources module, and is now in the implementation process. Job descriptions and job titles have been migrated to this site, and the system will be used throughout the entire recruiting and onboarding process. This includes job requisitions, postings, advertisements, interview scheduling, and decision notifications. The launch date is July 1st, and training sessions of the new system will be held over the summer for supervisors and principals. The committee also discussed Blackboard Web Community Manager. The district's migration from the current SchoolWorld websites over to the new Blackboard Web Community Manager began in late May, and this allowed time to populate the new sites and to make any necessary changes or additions during the month of June for the launch date of July 1st. Gaggle. Gaggle is the filter that will be put into place beginning in September for grades 6 through 12. Currently, student email accounts are limited to communication within the OBPS domain. There have been many requests to have access to emails addresses outside of our domain. Gaggle will monitor emails and attached documents being sent or received, and it will send an alert if any emails contain inappropriate words or images. The committee also discussed Kindles. Mrs. Moran stated that students and teachers are very happy with the Kindle fires for preschool and kindergarten classrooms. Mrs. Moran and Paula in Georgia's presented the Kindles at the Middlesex County Technology Council Meeting, and they were very well received. Life after the iPads: Device Preferences and Priorities. Paula in Georgia's stated that the iPads have been in use for the past four to five years and are still very effective. However, they will not be able to be used for PARC testing next year. Mrs. Moran stated that we have been looking at the HP 360 tablet with Gorilla Glass and adorable case. HP is marketing and recommending this device as a future-ready tool. Mrs. Moran has some concerns about the stylus that come with the tablet. There was a suggestion that the stylus be included in the school supply list, but options are still being weighed. Also, we're looking at HP Streams, and they're also being explored, options with them. The committee also discussed the Technology Integration Specialist, the updated job description. The Technology Integrated Specialist job description was approved at the May board meeting, and the reassignment is on tonight's agenda. The area of service is now K through 12, and the job description notes proficiencies in office and modes of instruction. The role of this teacher will be of an instructional coach, working alongside the teachers to assist and guide them in using technology. Digital resources, portfolios, assessments, and attendance at the district technology and tech roundtable meetings were also added to the job description. PARK Review. Mrs. Moran stated that the Streams and Desktops perform very well during PARK testing, but as mentioned, there were a few concerns that occurred with the iPads. Also, the elementary computer labs are due for a refresh, and Mrs. Moran said that we'll begin with desktops, being that they're wired directly, and they work well with testing. The district needs to have everything in place by February, March, in order to support PARK testing. Lastly, the committee discussed the New Jersey Future Ready Schools Initiative. Mrs. Moran stated that we are a national future-ready school, being that we have met the criteria for the National Future Ready Initiative. The state of New Jersey is now starting a New Jersey certification program, and the related resolution is also under tonight's meeting, under curriculum. The district has already completed the self-assessment and the online signing of the Future Ready Pledge. We have a stakeholder committee already in place from the creation of the technology plan. Mrs. Moran will work with the technology staff to pull the district-wide items together. And the new tech integration teacher will work with the principals and staff for the individual schools. We are aiming to have every school designated as a future-ready school. And this concludes technology. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dineoff, Mrs. Ellis Foster, anything? I believe, anybody on that side, Jill?
Okay, I have two reports. The first is from the District Curriculum and Visual and Performing Arts Committee, meeting which was held on June 5th. Dr. Calandria updated the committee on the proposal for the new middle school intervention software, as well as feedback and findings on the program currently being used. I Ready is the program of choice. Dr. Tuie and Dr. Cascone provided the committee with highlights of the Achieve 3000 program implementation for the 2016-2017 school year, including usage and student growth. Highlights of student growth were shared, including that the average student Lexile growth was 93 points, twice the expected growth, and there was an increase of 320 students on track for college and career readiness. students on track for college and career readiness. Dr. Cascone reviewed the curriculum writing proposals for the 2017-2018 school year. Projects include, but are not limited to, revision of the K-12 ELA curriculum auto-shop and minor revisions to the K-12 math curriculum after its first year of implementation. Mr. Schmoker presented the recommendations for middle and high school science textbook adoptions, as well as the programs to be used in the elementary pilot. The HMH Series Science Dimensions Middle School Series was recommended for a seven-year prescription, subscription, I'm sorry, which will ensure teacher and student access to state-of-the-art materials aligned to the next-generation science standards. Dr. Ferrara provided an update to the committee on the status of research and planning for the 2018-2019 elementary math adoption. The current series, Math in Focus, is eight years old, and the online license is expiring. Teacher feedback and textbook information collected to date are pointing in the direction of adopting the latest edition of the existing series, Math in Focus. Final research will be conducted this summer with a recommendation to senior administration and board in the early fall. And I have a Municipal Alliance report. There were meetings held on May 17th and June 21st. This is a summary of both meetings. In the elementary school, the slogan art contest forums for next year's Hooked on Fishing, Not on Drugs event went out to the schools. This year's fishing event was held on June 10th and was a great success. In the middle schools, the Lindsay Meyer Teen Institute held training for Sauk and Sandberg peer-to-peer on May 31st. At the high school, the opiate prevention presentation by Doug Collier on May 24th in ninth-grade health classes. Lindsay Meyer Teen Institute held training for the peer leaders on June 1st. Mock DWI and Walk the Line was held at the high school on May 16th. Presentation by the Municipal Alliance was given to parents and students at the parking permit night on May 9th, and the alliance donated $3,500 to Project Graduation this year. Also, at the high school level, there was beginnings of a discussion of the possibility of a parent-signed no alcohol-serving contract at prom parties. For the community, they reported that the Hidden in Plain Sight, Mayor's Town Hall Forum held on April 24th was slightly better attended by the public. Attendants at those things seemed to be growing, and they wanted me to thank Ms. Ellis Foster for her help with the new poster, which really helped get the point across. The alliance briefly discussed the Board of Ed strategic plan, specifically ways to educate parents in the community about drug awareness. The next meeting is in September, and that discussion will continue. Officer Pat DiNofrio gave me a flyer regarding the dangers of vaping and asked me to spread the word on social media. He'll be speaking to the superintendent and the high school principals regarding getting the posters in the high school in the fall.
Thank you, Mrs. Cowley.
Mrs. De Prima, actually, I have one more.
Sure.
NJSPA. Okay, thank you. This is a NJSPA report, the New Jersey School Boards Association. Last month, I represented the board at the New Jersey School Boards Association's semi-annual Delegate Assembly, which took place on May 20th. It was attended by over 150 board members, and I just need to provide a brief summary of delegate action taken by the Assembly. The Delegate Assembly is NJSPA's major policy-setting body. Action by the delegates determines the association's positions before the state legislature, the State Board of Education, Congress, and the courts. First, the Delegate Assembly elected new officers, including Daniel Sinclair as president. The Delegate Assembly also considered two resolutions. One, originally from the Edison Township Board of Education in Middlesex County, proposed new policy language stating that the NJSPA believes that New Jersey charter schools erode the operations of public education by draining needed financial resources. After significant discussion and numerous amendments to the original resolution, the representatives voted to send the matter for further study to an NJSPA committee, meaning it was tabled. The committee's recommendations will be presented at the next Delegate Assembly. Unfortunately, this resolution was tabled, but I want to read two current policy statements that are current in the NJSPA Policy and Position Statements Manual. These have been passed over prior years. The NJSPA made it clear that it believes that public funds should not be used to fund non-public schools, and opposes the use of public funds for vouchers or tuition tax credits or attendance at private or religious schools. The NJSPA believes that a Financial Impact Report statement should be part of the charter school application process, which would project the economic impact and tax consequences to the district and community over at least a five-year period. Next, the other resolution came from the Waterford Township Board of Education, which is located in Camden County. The resolution had requested that the NJSPA adopt a policy stating its belief that existing New Jersey state law should be amended by the legislature to allow for districts to enter into a shared superintendent contract on an as-needed emergent basis without time restrictions, as current law only permits boards to appoint a shared superintendent for a period between three and five years. And this resolution was rejected by the delegates. The next Delegate Assembly will take place in November 2017. And lastly, along with my NJSPA report, I just want to congratulate Kevin Syak of the Saraville Board of Education on being named President of the National School Boards Association. So that's national. It's a truly amazing and noteworthy accomplishment, as there has not been a National School Boards Association President from New Jersey in over 50 years, and not just from New Jersey, but from a neighboring town of Saraville, where Kevin currently serves as the President of the Saraville Board of Education. He's a highly experienced and knowledgeable public servant, and I thank him for all his dedication and for being a great resource. Now, more than ever, we need a very strong advocate for public education, especially on the national stage, so I'm very grateful that Mr. Syak is in this vital role. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dineoff. I had a short Athletics, Food Service, and Medical Service Committee meeting on May 1st. Just a few short notes. Lead Nurse Audrey Baker advised that going forward, we will need a clearance of nursing form on all out-of-state trips. It is our responsibility to apply prior to a trip. Nurse Baker will be presenting at a May 9th Nurses' Meeting. May 10th was School Nurse Day. And with three nurses retiring, an ongoing problem we face is staffing nurses. School nurses will be awarding a scholarship at Awards Night, and Nurse Baker also provided a handout from NJSSNA, New Jersey State School Nurses Association, detailing the role of a certified school nurse. Discussion followed. Food Services. Sodexo General Manager Michelle Feliciano and Operations Manager Kate Salerno spoke about cafeteria action stations, new menu items, and high school student ambassadors from marketing class who would assist in research and marketing. They also spoke about a new web-based program, which will be available next year, I believe, where carbs, calories, et cetera, of different menu items will be visible to nurses and parents or guardians. A disclaimer would need to be signed by parents, guardians, whereas some foods may be substituted. This year, Sodexo also introduced middle and high school raffles, where various prizes were awarded. Portion size was discussed, and it's determined by grade level. Sodexo will also be awarding a scholarship at Awards Night. Ms. Feliciano and Ms. Salerno provided a handout, Sodexo Food Service Year in Review. Discussion followed. And Athletics. Athletic Director Dan Domeno gave an update on all the records Ray Rivera is breaking, along with updates on all Fall and Spring sports. May 26th was Signing Day for Student Athletes. Mr. Domeno spoke again of the Athlete of the Month program, and the sports award banquet was to be held on June 13th at the Grand Marquis. Mr. Domeno also spoke of the Fall Tailgate Food Truck Night recently held at Lombardi Field. Mr. Domeno provided an Old Bridge Athletics Information Packet detailing various sports-related accomplishments and dates. Some questions arose regarding number of lacrosse coaches and busing to and from sporting events. Discussion followed. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Facilities use, I think everybody has had something in their packet last week at the agenda meeting. Hearing of residents. Agenda items only. Anybody? Seeing no hands. Moving on to policy. Can I have a motion to move policy number one?
Reed will motion policy number one.
Mr. Reed, in a second.
Dineoff will second.
Mr. Dineoff. Any discussion? Mr. Mauer, please.
Andriani. Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Mr. Mauer, just interrupt me if you have any of those corrections that you were talking about. Curriculum Professional Development, items one through 23. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. -- I'm sorry.
Mrs. Ellis Foster, second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Cowley. Mr. Mauer, did you need to add anything?
Yes. On Resolution, on page seven, Resolution Number One, about near the bottom where it says Southwood School, it should say Brooke Balsam and Gina Peterson. Please remove Kimberly Muscarello and add Gina Peterson. Then please move to page 12, Resolution Number 20. Under Curriculum Writers, the first box is blank. Please add the name Jennifer Washburn, W-A-S-H-B-U-R-N. Thank you, Mr. De Prima.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 23, as amended, pass.
Thank you. Athletics, items one through, oh, one and two. Need a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Mrs. Cowley, second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Ellis Foster. Mr. Mauer, any changes?
Callie.
Yes.
Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Resolutions one and --
Okay, Finance, items one through 22. Can I have a motion, please?
Dineoff will move Finance, items one through 22.
Mr. Dineoff, in a second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Ellis Foster. Discussion, questions?
Mr. De Prima, we need to administratively remove from page 18 Resolution Number 10 in its entirety.
Anything else, Mr. Mauer?
No.
Roll call, please.
Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 22, minus number 10, pass.
Okay, Non-Certificated Personnel Office, items one through seven. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Andriani, you'll second.
Mrs. Ellis Foster, Mrs. Andriani. Mr. Mauer, anything to add? Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Resolutions one through seven, pass.
Item 21, Non-Certificated Personnel Operational, item, oh, one and two. Motion, please? Somebody?
I'll move it.
Mrs. Ellis Foster.
Dineoff will second.
Mr. Dineoff. Discussion?
Yes, under item number one, the years of service, approximate should be 23.
Okay, I see a retirement. Thank you for your service, Mr. Nistico. Thank you for everything you've done for 23 years. Discussion, anybody? Mr. Mauer.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
Dineoff.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Resolutions one and two, as amended.
Non-Certificated Personnel Other, items one through 15. Can I have a motion, please?
Callie, I'll move.
Mrs. Cowley, in a second. Anybody?
Andriani.
Mrs. Andriani, thank you. Discussional questions?
There's a comment on items 13 and 14, which deal with registered nurses. Professionally, are they not considered to be certified people?
Yeah, I don't think we heard you. Can you say it a little louder, please?
Yeah. Items 13 and 14 deal with the employment or reassignment of two registered nurses, and I'm asking is, registered nurses, I think in the professional world, are considered certified people? Should they be into the certified section? That's my question, that's all.
We've always had the registered nurses under this section of the agenda, and the certified nurses go along with the certified staff.
I would ask the attorney for a clarification, a DOE certification or a professional certification?
Yeah, and the answer is, they are professionally certified. The designations on your agenda are not legally binding in any way. There would be nothing wrong with moving them into certified staff, but there's nothing wrong with leaving them as they've been either. But yes, your point is correct, they are professionals.
Mr. De Prima, just one thing. One, we do have a retirement in this section as well?
Yes, Mrs. Andriani, you are correct. I apologize for that. Ms. Hurst, thank you also for your 25 years of service. Have a wonderful retirement. Anybody else, anything? Mr. Mauer.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 15, pass.
Certified Personnel, items one through 31, 39, I apologize. Can I have a motion, please?
Reed moves Certified Personnel, one through 39.
In a second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Ellis Foster. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. De Prima, on page 27, Resolution Number Five, the first item, Antonette Larkin, the effective date in the right-hand column should be 4/17/17-LDC. And then on page 32, Resolution Number 30, item K should be administratively removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. I see a retirement here also. Chief Pitzer, 14 years of service, thank you for everything you've done for the ROTC. I still get chills when they walk into an event and we do the salute, and again, thank you for everything you've done for us. Any other discussion of questions? Mr. Mauer.
Weber.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes, but I'm abstaining from 33.
What number?
33.
33.
Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 39, as amended, pass.
Okay, Non-Certificated Personnel Transportation, items one through three. Have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Mrs. Ellis Foster, in a second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Cowley. Discussion, or, Mr. Mauer, any changes? Okay, roll call, please.
Just a correction, Mr. De Prima, Mrs. Cowley asked me in the prior vote under Certified Personnel to also abstain from 39, Resolution 39. 33, she's abstaining from 33 and 39. Correct?
And Mr. Reed, just for clarification purposes, do you want to abstain on number 33 as well, on Certified Personnel, Dr. Hoker's contract? It's Dr. Hoker's contract. The answer is yes, you do. Mr. Mara, you got that? 39, there you have it.
Okay, returning to non-certificated personnel transportation. Weber.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Resolutions one through three, pass.
Okay, supplies, equipment, and services, items one through 21. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Weber.
I'll second.
Mrs. Cowley. Discussion, or, Mr. Mara, any changes?
No changes.
Anybody? Roll call, please.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 21, pass.
Okay, transportation, items one through nine. Can I have a motion, please?
Callie will move.
Dineoff will second.
Mrs. Cowley and Mr. Dineoff. Discussion? Mr. Mara.
Callie.
Yes.
Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Resolutions one through --
Okay, miscellaneous, items one through nine. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Mrs. Ellis Foster. Second.
Second.
Mr. Weber. Discussion or questions? Mr. Mara.
Dineoff.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Callie.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Resolutions one through nine, pass.
Okay, hearing of residents on any school district issue? Okay, seeing no hands, move on to old business or new business, colleagues? Anybody?
I have new business, if that's okay. At the graduation, which was a wonderful ceremony, Mr. Sididino, in his comments, mentioned that our Air Force -- our freshmen going to the Air Force Academy was kind enough to purchase some type of a cord. I don't know if it was a tassel, or if it was a ribbon, or some kind of cord for all of the other students that were graduating, who were also joining the military, which I thought was a great idea. With that said, I had been contacted by a young lady that's in one of the career trades programs, and she was at graduation and heard the comments. And her comment to me was, could she fundraise and purchase something similar for the career trades? Now, we went through this with Dr. Piscatelli many years ago, when we were talking about recognition for all students besides just either academic or a national honor society. I had had a conversation with Dr. Cascone about this also, but it doesn't seem to go anywhere, so I told the young lady that I would mention it. Now, I don't know what the correct procedure would be, whether it would be okay for her to do this, or whether or not we do that through some kind of proper channels and have something official, but I'd like to respectfully request that somebody look into that, to let me know, or I can have the young lady come in August or September and ask herself at a board meeting.
I would suggest that we direct it to the curriculum committee.
Okay.
Because the curriculum committee sets up the graduation requirements in accordance with the state, and to see where it would go. The cords were purchased are through the ROTC program, so it's a recognized program, so we'd have to see what weights and measures you have to go through to do something similar for those who are entering the workforce.
Well, it's not necessarily something that, you know, in other words, the young lady's saying there are people in her program, other students in her program, that have As and Bs, and they may not be the best at Italian or at calculus, so they would like to have something that they could wear as well, to show that they are proficient in, you know, in their interest area. So I told her it sounded good to me, and I would bring it forth, just to find out which way to proceed with that. So I will get in touch with Dr. Cascone again, and we'll get it through the committee. All righty, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Anybody else? Mrs. Ellis Foster?
I do, I just have two things. So, one, I'd just like to recognize, on Saturday, June 17th, we held the annual Old Bridge Relay for Life, and while there was great enthusiasm, the weather was really not on our side. It was weather-wise a miserable day, but the efforts of the Old Bridge community, though, did shine through. So we had great representation, as always, from all of our schools and the staff. We had, early in the morning, at 7:00, we had the athletes, 7:00, I'll repeat that, 7:00 AM on Saturday, the day after the last day of school, we're all on the field, helping getting everything set up and getting things going, and we had, as I said, a number of schools there. We had junior ROTC come out, present the colors. The marching band literally played in the rain, and it was not rain, it was downpouring rain. So they just stayed there and they played, so it was, you know, great as usual, and, you know, people, there was diehards who went the whole time. The PTSA had the concession stand open, which was great because it had shelter for some people. So it was, you know, again, just a great, you know, the community coming together, and for those who were there, the rain didn't stop it. Luckily, it was warm, so it was warm rain, not cold rain, so, once again, and that was the ninth year, so next year will be the 10th anniversary, so hopefully we'll have some really great things. And then the other thing I want to add, Mrs. Andriani reminded me about graduation. You know, it was after graduation, and I was on the side when the students were going up, and there was somebody from the PNC directing them there, and I just was standing there waiting, and totally unsolicited, she said to me, because she knew that I'd come from the back, so I had something to do with the school, she didn't know what, and she said, "Can I tell you, this group of students was the best group of students we've ever had here?" And she said, "And I see a lot of students here." She said, "They were so," she said, "they were so polite, and they were so kind," and she said, "even the parents." So it was just, you know, really nice to hear that, because we know that, and, you know, we get to see it, but to have somebody, you know, just there watching and observing them, and just, you know, doing their job to keep traffic, recognizing the students, it was a really nice thing to hear. So it was a great way to end the year. So, and so anyway, thanks, everybody, though, for a great year, for the academic year, and enjoy the summer. We'll be back in August. But I know everybody else, there'll be a lot of people working over the summer, so we'll keep going. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellis Foster. That just goes along with the video we saw. That's what the school district's all about. Very proud to be a part of this. Anybody else have anything?
We have, like, yeah, something else. Without going into detail, I would like to respectfully request the administration and/or our legal counsel and our policy committee to revisit our extended field trip policy with chaperones. And we'll just leave it at that. So, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, this is our last meeting of the school year, and I just hope everybody has a wonderful summer. We will see you in August. Okay, I'm adding safe, I might as well say safe, healthy, happy, enjoyable summer. We will see you soon, and thank you for another great school year. Good night, everyone. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Yeah, you need a motion for a closed session, just for a brief discussion of two issues, a workers' comp litigation matter and a professional contract issue.
Motion, please?
I'll move it.
Dineoff will second.
Mrs. Cowley and Mr. Dineoff.
All in favor?
Bye.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, good night, everyone. We will not be back.